Call to order this committee meeting for zoning. This meeting is concerning the Mansfield Home Value and Family Protection Act. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Director Spahn to give us a presentation on this act.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, council members, mayor, and all of the employees or officials of the city. Tonight is an opportunity for myself as law director to express in great detail the import and purpose of the proposed Mansfield Home Value and Family Protection Act. I am certain that each member of council cares about their constituency. I'm sure that we all, as a body politic, care about our city. But some of us are more informed or less informed than others. I want council to know that this act was a product of over 200 hours of intensive analysis and research. I've researched all of the cases in the state of Ohio that deal with the issues of fracking and injection wells. I searched and evaluated the decisions as it relates to the Ohio Constitution and the federal Constitution. I researched and evaluated the situations in all 50 states involving this issue, including their decisions in their states and what they have done with it. I do want to say this at the outset. That which some entities are desirous of dumping into our community, that is toxic waste dumping, which is a byproduct of the fracking industry, that toxic waste is banned in the state of Pennsylvania. The state of Pennsylvania had the adequate information and political wherewithal and will to ban further injections into their state. They only have 17 injection wells in the entire state of Pennsylvania when Pennsylvania shut down and prohibited dumping this poison into their state. Presently, we have more than 17 wells just in one or more counties in the state of Ohio. But Pennsylvania banned it. The state of New York, using their scientists, their environmental protection experts, their experiences of contamination of water and seismic events, they banned it. They prohibit the injection of toxic waste poison into their states. This evening, I ask this council to consider whether or not it would at least adopt this proposed ordinance, which would provide some protection against this imminent threat that faces our community. It begins with that in, I believe, 2012. Our citizens, our voters, went to the ballot box and overwhelmingly voted for the Mansfield Bill of Rights, 62 percent overwhelmingly. I would suggest respectfully to this body politic that that mandate is a mandate that beckons each of us in our official positions to do all that we can to protect our environment. That mandate by the people, the citizens of Mansfield, beckons that no matter who's in office, presently or in the future, forever in our charter, there is this mandate to protect our dear city from toxic waste and other environmental threats. This mandate is an issue that comes before us this evening because of events that have occurred in the state of Ohio since 2009. In roughly 2009, the fracking industry came into the state of Ohio and other parts around our country. I want to make it very clear that I am not against fracking. Quite to the contrary, I support fracking as long as it's done responsibly and safely. In the process of fracking, however, the process of fracking is essentially to take water, lubricate the water with sand, lubricate it with very poisonous toxic materials, inject it into the ground under tremendous pressure, and forces gas and oil upward. The gas and oil is then captured. That gas and oil is a thing of value. It's good for our country. It will strengthen our country. It makes us less dependent upon oil and gas. It's something that we need. It's something that provides jobs. It's something that can create industry. However, the byproduct in the process is called brine. That's the water-laced toxic fluid that was injected deeply into the ground to force the gas and oil up. When it comes back up to the surface, it's poisonous. It's toxic. No one drinks it. If someone drank it, they would become seriously ill or die. If it spilled on the ground, wherever it spilled, it kills everything, and nothing will ever grow there. This toxic waste is an imminent threat to our community because nothing's going to stop the fracking industry. And the fracking industry continues to come closer and closer and closer to the city of Mansfield. In fact, I was advised yesterday, two days ago, that there will be a fracking well in Moore County. Now, when we look at this waste that was injected into the ground, the toxic wa— the fluid that came up is toxic waste, it's not only poisonous, it's radioactive. Now, for the most part, the radioactive aspects of this liquid are that it's below the safe standards. In other words, it's not such high radioactive, in terms of its characteristic, that's immediate danger. But there are many factors involved, and that is, once that fracking fluid, the toxic waste, comes up to the surface, the question is, how is it handled? And some companies are handling this liquid and making it thicker as a mud. And when that occurs, in some instances, this toxic waste can be hundreds of times radioactive levels, hundreds of times over the EPA's safe standards. So we're dealing with poisons. We're dealing with toxic waste that can be radioactive. We're dealing with now Ohio, and particularly the city of Mansfield, could become the dumping ground for this toxic waste. Now, what companies are involved? Earlier, I'm the first law director in the state of Ohio to win a successful battle against an injection well company. As everyone would recall, we had an injection well company that obtained a permit through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to put an injection well in our industrial park. As a result of our litigation against them after they had filed suit, they saw the handwriting on the wall, and based upon the legal arguments that we had made, they had to dismiss the case. That owner of that property, though, still exists. His name is Steve Mobley. He owns what he calls Buckeye Brine. Buckeye Brine is really, just like Steve Mobley from Texas. He is related to some of the relatives that are the high-ranking officials in the oil and gas industry. Unlike a lot of injection well companies, he's not looked at as a mom-and-pop operator. Buckeye Brine, which is simply, again, a Texas company that incorporated under Ohio, what he does, and what his plan was, was to come to Pennsylvania and by rail, actually obtain millions and millions and millions of barrels of this toxic waste, have it transported by railway and by truck to where? To Mansfield, Ohio, to where? In our industrial park. Now, Buckeye Brine, right now, has not yet filed for another permit, but they still own the property. They can at any time apply for a permit and then proceed to put an injection well in our industrial park. They're now putting in their third injection well in eastern Ohio, and again, they are described not as a mom-and-pop operation, but as an industrial-sized, huge, toxic waste dumping company. Now, why do we need this act? First of all, I would like to explain to council members and to the public as a whole what an injection well facility looks like. As we can see, there's a three-foot-by-five-foot photograph of an injection well. Now, this is the actual injection well facility that was established in Youngstown, Ohio. And when they put it there, it was simply a company that went to the state of Ohio, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. They got a permit. Youngstown had no say-so about it. They set up their facility, and within just a few weeks, there was a 4.0 Richter-scale earthquake that extended for miles. In terms of the seismology, that earthquake was felt in 17 states, but it was certainly felt in Youngstown. And there were some complaints of some damage in that neighborhood. So what you see here, these are holding tanks. So there's a railway that's down here or behind it. They bring the toxic waste in. They put it into these holding tanks. Now, they either put it into the holding tanks just to hold it, and then recommence injecting it downward into the ground, or what they do is they put it in those holding tanks and they reprocess it. When they reprocess it, they put additional poison chemicals into the toxic fluid to cause oil and gas to rise, and then they extract from the top of that oil so it can be sold, and gas so it can also be used. Now, for every gallon of oil that comes up from the ground, it requires 10 gallons of brine to produce it. So what happened was, there was this earthquake. And I can remember environmentalists saying to me early on, "Well, injection wells cause earthquakes." I didn't believe it. I thought that was a stretch. I think these are environmental Nazis. I thought these were, you know, people that were extreme. I really didn't. Well, and I think when this earthquake hit, I still felt that way. Well, I don't now. Because this earthquake occurred, and they determined, the scientists involved, the federal government involved, everyone determined that this injection well and the fluid that they injected caused the earthquake. Now, this year in 2015, the federal government had concluded and finished the most extensive study on injection wells in the history of our country. That study included studies of injection wells all across the country. It involves the National Geological Society as well. They came to the indisputable conclusion, indisputable, unequivocal, that injection wells, not fracking wells, but injection wells, cause major earthquake seismic events. These events are called man-made induced earthquakes. Now, to give an example of the impact when this study came out, in Oklahoma, on November 5th, 2011, they had an earthquake. And that earthquake, they attributed to the injection wells. When you see this injection well, think of broadview heights up near Cleveland, geographically the size of Ontario, one-third the size of Mansfield. When the fracking industry came in so suddenly and so early because it was fertile for fracking, they never dreamed what would happen to their city. They woke up one day and they had 87 wells in their city, 87, the size of Ontario. And these wells of all kinds, fracking and injection wells, they were put in neighborhoods. They were put next to schools. They were injecting fluid of all kinds. In the most recent Supreme Court decision, you've heard the Ohio Supreme Court, Beck versus Monroe Falls, that was a case dealing with an injection well in the city itself in a residential neighborhood. In this Oklahoma community, it said until 2008, this city, Oklahoma experienced an average of one to two earthquakes of 3.0 magnitude or greater each year. And then it says, as this industry of injection wells continued, in 2009, there were 20. The next year, there were 42 earthquakes. In 2014, there were 585 earthquakes in the city. And by the count of this year, the number of earthquakes will now exceed 700. Youngstown, Ohio, this is published, the earthquake occurred on Saturday, December 30th, 2011, well, on December 31st, 2011. Youngstown. Before January 2011, Youngstown, Ohio, which is located on the Marcellus Shale, had never experienced an earthquake, at least not since researchers began observations in 1776. However, in December 2010, the North Star One Injection Well, that's what's before you, came online to pump wastewater from fracking projects, from fracking projects in Pennsylvania into storage deep underground. And the year that followed, seismometers in and around Youngstown now recorded 109 earthquakes, the strongest registering a magnitude 3.9 earthquake on December 31st, 2011. The well was shut down after the quake. Now, it's indisputable, the federal government, again, has conclusively established that these injection wells will cause earthquakes. Now, how far is the effect of the earthquake? Well, if we take Youngstown, for example, the earthquake shaking can occur for miles. In other words, it's just not at the location of the injection well itself. It can be many miles away. So if we have an injection well in our industrial park, which is a fantastic industrial park, which has a great future to it, which has a great airport, which has a future, but we have to protect it, make sure we don't ruin it. If we allow an injection well to be put into our industrial park, there's no company in their right mind, in fulfilling their fiduciary obligations to their shareholders, that would invest millions and millions of dollars to put a corporate structure-building manufacturing plant in an industrial well, because nobody in their right mind is going to put a building, a structure, near the proximity of an industry that causes earthquakes. It just won't happen. So the question is, in addition to seismic events, do injection wells cause water pollution? I can only say that, here's an article dated June 15th, 2015, caption, "The United States' EPA Study Confirms Water Contamination Caused by Fracking." Quote, "The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, U.S. EPA, recently released study of fracking impacts to water clearly refutes the fracking industry's longstanding claim that there has not been a single confirmed case of water contamination related to hydraulic fracturing." Then they say, "In a thorough debunking of the industry's favored talking point, U.S. EPA officially confirmed officially that hydraulic fracturing activities have directly and irrefutably led to cases of water contamination in southwestern Pennsylvania, northeastern Pennsylvania, and Kildare, North Dakota." What happens is, a company comes in and puts an injection well in. Now, this injection well and the other injection wells, the public needs to know this. They inject 10,000 barrels per day of toxic fluid, 10,000 barrels per day, under pressure, deep into the ground. The problem is, and you multiply that by 365 days, and multiply that by 50 more injection The problem is, they don't know where this toxic waste is going to go. No one knows. There are the aquifers, crevices, the effisters underneath the ground, that maybe there's to be a natural earthquake 1,000 years from now. They do not know the impact of this toxic poison, but it's lubricated. And the injection wells themselves, how long will they last? 10 years? 50 years? 100 years? What building do we have that we know of that's lasted for 200 years? At some point in time, these wells are going to deteriorate. There's one scientist, at least one, from the US Geological Survey, that says, in the areas where they've allowed massive amounts of injection, toxic waste dumping, they said, he said, "In 10 to 30 years, we are going to have a massive tragedy, and many, many, many people are going to get sick and maybe die." So why do we need this proposed act? This is what this act says. It says, well, let me backtrack for a moment. The only way an injection well becomes operational is because a company goes to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. They get a permit. Now, that permit authorizes them to establish, say, an injection well. There's no requirement to even have a public hearing in the community. In fact, there's so much opposition to this, you know, the last higher of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources is refusing to even engage in any public hearings. So they, then, let's say you have some neighbor in the city that wants to sell their land or lease their land, and put an injection well in, they're going to make money off of it, and so they establish this injection well. Well, the problem is that if that injection well causes an earthquake or contaminates a person's property, there is no remedy under the present law, under the present law. For example, if you live in Woodland Estates, or Royal Oak, or Maple Lake Park, or anywhere near Middle Belleville, or any major neighborhood in our city, if you put this, any type of an injection well in your neighbor, you didn't, but if it's put in there, your home is worthless. Nobody's going to want to buy your home. Nobody's going to want to live in your home. Now you have a duty to disclose different things to any prospective buyers. You can't sell your home, and you still have to pay your mortgage. You're stuck. I received a phone call this morning from eastern Ohio, on a person in a family, elderly couple. The gentleman had a stroke, and there is a great deal of seismic activity occurring in that area. He's on the top of a hillside, and the hill is sliding down, and his home is falling apart. And he has no remedy, none. So the question is, this legislation says that if an injection well company, and not just an injection well company, any industry, radioactive storage, bacterial warfare, research, any industry, if any industry is put in your residential or near your residential neighborhood, and it causes a reduction in the market value of your home by at least 25 percent, it says the city has the right to sue for injunctive relief as well as the homeowner, and the homeowner has the right to sue for injunctive relief and for damages. So that's the purpose, the purpose of this legislation, to give standing. In this industry, there's no, there are no statutes that allow for compensation. That's a denial due process of law. For example, if the state—
Director Spahn, I want to, I want to give you as much time as I can, but I want to give some, leave some time for public comment.
Well, I just need to finish a couple of other things that are very important. If the state wants to take, put a roadway through property, then they do it by eminent domain, and they have to pay the property owner. If the state, in conjunction with oil companies, wants to cross your land, put pipelines there, there's an easement, they have to pay for that easement. Under the present law, there's no statute that provides compensation for the homeowner. And this is the reason why this legislation is needed, to give standing for property owners to be able to sue. And finally, this will really shock everybody. If your home is damaged by an earthquake caused by an injection well, your insurance cover, your insurance coverage is not applied. Present Nationwide Insurance has made it very clear that they're not going to insure the injection well industry. So if you suffer harm as a result of an earthquake, you have no coverage, even if you had earthquake coverage. And less than 1 percent of Ohioans even have earthquake coverage. But even if you did, it doesn't apply. It's not a covered rest because it wasn't created by a natural event. It happened, but as a result of the activity you made. The same with contamination of water or your soil. If this brine, toxic poison, percolates up to the surface, contaminates your ground, and you can't ever grow anything there, you can't live there again because it's not healthy, your insurance policy is not covered. Nationwide Insurance and every other insurance company in the state of Ohio has in fine print, "We do not cover for contamination of property." So this legislation is not only needed, it's urgent. The only reason I didn't recommend it is emergency legislation, because I didn't want to give the energy company the opportunity to elect that this wasn't, to create a legal argument, this was an emergency legislation. Should be, but I don't want to give them that legal argument. And they don't want this legislation passed. Why? Because they don't want any exposure to anybody. So I have additional information to give, and I'll defer to the chair in terms of public comment and any statements, and I hope I'll have an opportunity to respond to those statements.
You will, Director Spahn. Thank you for that presentation. At this moment, at this time, I'd like to open the mic for any other comments pertaining to this bill.
When he was talking, and he didn't mention this, there was in Texas recently, and I looked it up to get the specifics, Karnes County explosion at a saltwater disposal well. It was a major explosion, and one person died. They're calling it a saltwater disposal well, quote, "brine." Saltwater shouldn't explode. This was an injection well. This exploded because of all the toxic chemicals that were included in this brine from fracking and fracking wastewater. So I just wanted to point that out. Every day, we seem to find more information, hear more things, more explosions, but this was really something that brought it home to me. They're still calling it, the press calls it, "Saltwater disposal well." It's more than that. We have to really realize that. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, thank you.
I wanted to just comment on your comment. The state of Texas now is so concerned about the injection wells causing earthquakes that in Ohio, all of this is regulated by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. The state of Texas is regulated by what they call the Railroad Commission, and they are so concerned about the earthquakes being caused by injection wells that ironically, the gas companies now are checking their gas wells and their gas lines for fear that the earthquake events are damaging or compromising integrity of their wells and their gas lines. the earthquake events are damaging or compromising integrity of their wells and their gas lines.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, for the record, I am Dave Ramey. I'm here as a citizen of Mansfield, and I commend Mr. Spahn for his, his knowledge of the industry and his acumen in that, in that area. However, the legislation that is before you, in my mind, has some very, very fatal flaws. And not to say that it shouldn't be addressed at some point, in a proper manner. I think I voiced my opinion in the past that this is, that we have zoning regulations in place which can be used to address the problems that are presented in this legislation, or presented with fracking industry, or the injection well industry. Mr. Spahn, Director Spahn alluded to a case called, in fact, it's captioned Morrison versus Beck Energy. More, and, and before Morris versus Beck Industry, the, everything was in a flux in the state of Ohio relative to injection wells, gas wells. The state Supreme Court, even though it was a decided decision, or a divisive decision, ruled that injection wells, gas wells, oil wells, were subject to state regulation primarily, if not primarily, and that municipalities had a very, very limited part to play in, in the control of wells and their implementation, or their control. I, I will say that I understand where this legislation is headed, but the problem that I see with it is that it, as I said earlier, needs more study. It only addresses certain zoning districts in the city of Mansfield, primarily those which are residential only. Keep in mind, and I think you all know this, that we have other zoning districts in the city of Mansfield which have housing units in them. The OS district, the B1 districts, the B2 districts, central business area downtown, they all have housing in them, they all permit housing to some extent and degree. This doesn't control that. And in reality, this is carving out three zoning districts in the city of Mansfield, and protecting them, and not protecting the rest of the city. There is nothing at this point in time probably that would prevent the state from granting preferred fluids, a permit in the industrial area. If you don't know, AK Steel has two injection wells, I believe already there, and have been there for 50 or 60 years. Right, wrong, or indifferent, they're there. And I'm not saying that's right, and I will state that I am not for urbanized injection wells, or having them anywhere in an urban area. They shouldn't be. But I think that you need to address this thing with more, in more depth, and address all the zoning areas, and not just some of them. Because by passing this and considering this, you're protecting R1 districts, and yet you're, you're, for example, you're avoiding Wedgewood, which is an OS district. This is an example. Or anything on Park Avenue West, going out to the Miracle Mile, or anything on Lexington Avenue from Main Street, south to the Giant Appleseed Shopping Center. All of those have houses in them. There's no protection afforded to these, to those areas by this piece of legislation. Also, I will say that I think, think it's suspect, in that it was given to you the night of council, at four o'clock in the afternoon, when all legislation is supposed to be in your hands by noon on Friday. We know that, we all know that. As for the emergency clause, it just blows my mind that you still don't understand what an emergency clause is for. If you had an emergency clause in this legislation, and you passed it, and I'm not saying that you should, please understand, if you pass it with an emergency clause, no industry could attack it, on a referendum basis or an initiative basis. That's what your emergency clause is for. Emergency clause just says it will take effect immediately. Right now, the way this is set up, it is set up to take effect 30 days after you pass it. That's a 30-day window for every industry out there to attack it openly. This is, this needs, this is just suspect, in my mind. And it needs more evaluation on council's part, more input from the law department, and make it a comprehensive piece, if you're going to make it a piece and consider it. It needs to be considered on a comprehensive basis, and not on a piecemeal basis. This is a piecemeal piece of legislation. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that. First of all, Mr. Ramey, as a private citizen, you've indicated you're speaking as a private I'd like you, in other words, I want to clearly understand what you're saying. Are you saying that you do not want this city council to provide the homeowners of our community protection from injection wells tonight?
What I'm saying is, this piece of legislation...
Yes, yes or no? Do you want them to provide the protection tonight or not?
John, I don't think that's a fair question.
Well, here's what's not fair. You wrote a private email to each and every member of city council, and you asked them to delay this legislation until after the election. That's playing politics with a private citizen.
All to order, all to order.
I have a letter right here.
Please keep your comments.
John, I'm not going to address that, I took already addressed that.
Ramey, please, please, turn it over. Please keep your comments to the points and issues that he brought up. If you don't want to comment on them, you can move on.
Yes. Secondly, as indicated before, this legislation was intended as the first step of legislation to protect residential communities, communities, neighborhoods which are zoned residential. And you can't say that because it doesn't embody other areas where you have mixed business and residential homes, that we should not proceed to provide immediate protection to our residential neighborhoods, because you say we have to have a comprehensive piece of legislation. We're working on legislation dealing with the other neighborhoods. So that's not an issue, there's no naivete there. Thirdly, in terms of emergency legislation, every homeowner in, in our neighborhoods, Woodland Hills, Royal Oak, and other neighborhoods, they're threatened tonight. There can be a, a permit tonight. This law director has a duty to protect the citizens, not tomorrow, not a week from now, not a month from now, but tonight. The mandate of the Bill of Rights says they want the protection, they expect the protection. And your analysis of the law, in terms of the decisions by the Supreme Court, I say respectfully, is simply utterly incorrect. You said previously that zoning provides, you said zoning provides protection against injection wells. Well, I'll read this again. This is by Justice O'Neill. He wrote, in his opinion, I quote and quote. Here's Justice O'Neill, February 17th, this year, quote unquote, "Let's be clear here. The Ohio General Assembly has created a zookeeper to feed the elephant in the living room. What the drilling industry has bought and paid for in campaign contributions, they shall receive. The oil and gas industry has gotten its way, and local control of drilling, location decisions have been unceremoniously taken away. Under this ruling," says Justice O'Neill, "under this ruling, a drilling permit could be granted in the exquisite residential neighborhoods of Buckar Arlington, Shaker Heights, or the Village of Indian Hill. Local zoning dating back to 1920 be damned." That's Ohio Supreme Court Justice William O'Neill.
And I understand that, Mr. Spahn, and he's also a dissenter in that opinion. So that's his viewpoint from a dissenter in the opinion. The other issue is...
Mr. Ramey versus me. You, you may adjourn. I'll come over and speak.
I don't think this is, he's spoken as a private citizen.
I need, I need the time, just, okay?
A couple more minutes.
I'm not going to go into...
I'm not done with my comments.
The Supreme Court passed this decision in February. Why now, in October, if this is such an urgency, as it wasn't not dealt with back in May, April, May, March, or April, March, May, and all of a sudden it comes to your attention as an urgent piece of legislation, one month before the election? That's all I'll say.
Well, I'll say this, you're the only private citizen, named Dave Ramey, that opposes providing immediate protection to the citizens of our community. As a law director, I'm going to proceed to ask council to protect as quickly as we can.
All to order. Are there any more public comments? Any more public comments? I'll open it now for my colleagues. Any comments from the...
Mr. Chairman, just a few things. I'm obviously an advocate for the protection of our environment, for the protection of our neighborhoods, and I'm certainly against chemicals being injected into our neighborhoods. I think this is a quality piece of legislation, but here's what I do think, I think this deserves an entire council vote. I think all of us need to say and vote on this matter tonight, so I would suggest, with my colleagues' favorability, that we move this out of committee, rather than keeping it in committee or killing this bill tonight. I, I hope to give all of our council people an opportunity to vote on this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think what the committee has heard, there still needs more work done, and I would say keep it in committee. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we keep it in committee and continue to work on the bill.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move this bill out of committee for council vote, or for a second reading, for its second reading.
Layer second.
It's up to you.
The second has come out of your committee.
Second has come out of my committee?
Yeah. Yes. Because you're in committee, so the second has to come out, out of your committee for the...
If not, who will the second one stay in committee or die?
If you don't get a second, it dies.
The present motion pending...
The bill can stay in committee.
It would stay in committee, right? You don't get a second.
Right.
What is the present motion?
Motion is that we move this bill out of committee for its second reading.
There was one motion, not so clear, to stay in committee. Neither one of them got a second. So then it stays in committee?
Oh, was there not a tending of a second on the motion?
Both of them, yes, sir. It's up to you, Jim. Stays in committee? That calls committee meeting to an end.
Yeah. Still in.
That stays in committee, and we call this zoning committee meeting.
Will we have a second reading of this?
How can you, if it's still in committee?
Is there a motion for a second?
No, we won't have, we won't have, I apologize. Correct, I'm correct. We will not have a second reading because it's still in committee.
Mr. Chairman, so this bill's going to stay in committee, we're going to have another form on this bill, the way it is, am I correct? And after we've explained everything about this bill tonight, and before?
There was no, there was no second, Chair, last chair.
I understand.
Evidently, all the answers or questions haven't been answered, and there's more work that needs to be done on it, it's quite evident. So, do we have time to do it properly?
Point taken.
Through the chair, the committee chair?
Go ahead, I recognize Justice.
Thank you. I see both motions die for lack of a second, but what is committee, what are they taking, holding it committee for? Are they going, they want more information from who?
From the law director.
From the law director.
I'm ready, I'm ready to present it this evening. I have more information.
So you're taking it back to committee to get more information, and then you'll bring it back to full body? All right.
Well, to committee.
Well, to committee.
We can, but we vote, I'm just conjecturing here, if we voted, but if we bring it out of the committee, then it can come on the floor of council for discussion, and have a second reading, we have more discussion. It's just scheduled for a second reading tonight anyway.
But you can, it only came in with two readings total, but you can't, make the motion to have a third reading and a vote next...
Next council.
It's not scheduled for November 3rd?
No, it was scheduled to be passed, the meeting before November 3rd.
It says...
Do we have it on?
It shows November 3rd.
It came into my office with two readings, that's what I...
But council can't move it to hold it for another day?
Yes.
When is our, our next council meeting?
November 3rd.
Yeah, November 3rd, right.
Mr. Walcott, do you plan on amending this piece of legislation?
No, not at all. This is a perfect piece of legislation. That's a result of 200 hours of legal research involving all our constitutional cases, cases throughout 48 states. And I've legated enough, I will say this...
Director, Director Spahn. Can I just let it die then, Chairman? I recognize Mr. Ramey.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, while, while listening to the, the individual discusses, the law director and Mr. Ramey, it did get me wondering about something, and I don't really need an answer tonight, it just, a question and that is coming up in my mind. Residential district, R1 and R2. And there's borders between residential, industrials, business, all this other stuff. And I, I'm starting to question now, there can be a business district right across the street from a residential, but it doesn't address that. But here, not too long ago, the director made a very good point about the injection well out at the industrial park. Well, by this legislation, it was the industrial park, they had the right to put it there, but public outcry in the legislation previously stopped it, not this. So now I'm wondering, why not the entire city of Mansfield, no matter how it's zoned, not just my neighborhood, R1 or R2? Just a thought, the, I'm not going to say debate, the discussion between the experts here tonight got me wondering now, why just R1, R2?
Well, we, this, this legislation's been before this body for several weeks, and you had any opportunity to approach me and ask me that question, but I'll answer that. This legislation is tailor-made for residentially zoned areas, because as complex as it was to put this legislation together, it should be kept separate because it is the strongest to apply only to residentially zoned neighborhoods. When you get into drafting legislation to deal with the same standing involving a mixed body of homes and businesses, it's more complex, and it has to be done more carefully, with greater detail, with greater exceptions. We should not mix the two, we should keep each one standing on its own. And what, and the other reason is, when you, when you buy a home to live in a residentially zoned neighborhood, you expect that you'll have the peaceful tranquility of residential neighborhood. If you buy a home in a mixed business, for residential neighborhood, you already know that you're in a business area. So, you keep the, the different acts separate and apart, so that you can first protect those... So you keep the different acts separate and apart so that you can first protect those who need the most immediate protection, and you don't wait to provide, why wait a day when the threat is imminent? There's no just cause to wait a single day to fail to provide immediate protection. The real issue should be, not whether or not there should be legislation that embodies the whole, the whole community, the real legislation should be, when we look at this single proposal, does it provide immediate protection for the homeowners in our city? And if it does, it should be, not tomorrow, not a week from now, immediately passed. That's the mandate of the voter, the voters when they pass the Bill of Rights in our community.
All right. Thank you, Director Spahn. This is still in committee.
It's still in committee.
Everybody closing this. Zoning committee meeting?
Done. The state will not protect us against this. And again, regardless of what more needs to be done, as a homeowner and as a north-end resident, where we see from community to community that the poorest or the most blighted communities are the ones targeted for waste dumps, incinerators, and other types of pollution that causes chronic illness, cancers, asthmas, and so forth. So as a north-end resident, I ask that something be done to protect us from not just injection wells, but other industry. You know, the industrial age is over. That's past. We've gone from the industrial belt to the rust belt to the abandonment belt. When I look at our job creators of the past, General Motors, Westinghouse, Tappan, go out to those sites and tell me what we have now. We have toxic sites, and it's left up to the city, working with state and federal government hopefully, to clean them up. But the residents in those areas have no voice in the matter. You know, I have friends that live near the Tappan site, they're disgusted with it, even though the building's down, piles of brick and the dust and the rubble and everything that they're dealing with. And again, on the north end, with Town and Country and the expansion there, those residents have put up with this chat from all this grain. We're talking about an organic material that litters their cars, their yards, their properties. It's coated with it, day in and day out. And I assume that this legislation would, would address that issue. You're not going to bring young couples into the city and have them buy a home, purchase a home for $100,000 or $150,000, and have some type of industrial activity permitted in an industrial zone or a business zone which directly affects the value of their home. They're going to be locked into a long-term loan and have the value of that property is gone. So I'm discouraged that it wasn't even being able to move out of committee this evening. We heard plenty from Director Spahn about the hazards. We went through this process in 2011 and 2012. When we passed the legislation across party lines, I was so proud of our community for working together to protect us from that threat of those two injection wells in the industrial park, that even the industrial, our good industrial corporate, you know, neighbors there that have helped build the city didn't want either. And even one that would have benefited from the fracking industry. You can't have a toxic waste site in any type of a community without looking long-term and realizing it's going to be a sacrifice zone at some point in time. If it can be done safely, we're so fortunate in Richland County that we don't have, we don't have extraction wells, we don't have injection wells. I don't believe there are Class 1 or Class 2 wells in Richland County. There was one out at the Still Mill in the early 1970s that failed. That's why the area known as Little Kentucky has city water, because their wells were contaminated by the Still Mill and the Class 1 well that they were injecting pickling juice down into. We've had our experiences with this failing. So I really wasn't going to testify, and Amy encouraged me, she looked surprised when I said no. I'm not feeling that well today. But I encourage you to find the, find the information you need and make a decision to move it at least out of committee and take a vote on it. This is crucial. Broadview Heights, the case that was brought up, the citizens enacted a, what's called a SADF, a Community Environmental Defense League Fund draft, which has been deemed unconstitutional by the Supreme Court. That is not what our legislation in 2012 was about. It exercises your ability as city government to say yes or no. We have a right to know what's being brought into our city. And as a resident, I expect all of you to protect me and my neighbors. Thank you.